Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion to adopt the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, vote in favor.
Hi.
Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Do you want to adopt the consent agenda?
Second?
I'll second.
Vote in favor. Speakers, communication, information lines. I don't have anything.
Don, there's nothing worse than a correct. Mr. Mayor, there's nothing on the... we received the...
Okay. Department reports, got anything up here? Yes, fire?
I have nothing further, unless you have questions.
Okay. Public Works tip?
Only thing besides what's on my report is we bought a new pickup, a different pickup, from the Forest Service last week. Been in the works for about a month and we finally got everything done. We bought a 2011 one-ton Ford diesel pickup. Seems to be a real good pickup, we're gonna get a snow pile for it. So maybe something to do the outlining area like the county does with theirs. Doesn't require CDLs on it, so open up to some of my other employees that don't have CDLs. So... I had a visit this past week with David Jordan. I'm not sure if this comes under public works or probably more under town manager, but he's from Safe Corporation and I never monitored our safe rates before and they had just been plummeting from what they were four years ago. They were... our safe rate that we were paying was about forty-four thousand dollars a year in 2015 and we've... since we got rid of the police force and we have basically no accidents, it's all the way down to ninety-seven hundred dollars from forty-four thousand. So, pretty substantial savings. It's about the lowest rate it could possibly be right now, so I thought that was good news.
Most of our prior rating is from the store. Unfortunately, law enforcement tends to be the folks that get the most injured and that's where our historical data come from, when we had... We've had multiple people's injuries over time and a lot is a lot in police departments, so that's been where that is. So going forward, I imagine unless something drastic happens with public works folks, which I don't see happening because of how important safety is to the town, this will be probably a very consistent rate for going forward.
I don't know if any of the councils have seen any of the city work crew with their new shirts. You can't miss them.
Yeah, I have seen them.
They're good tights.
He's your... somebody to run over, or what you're saying?
Like if they're not wearing their glasses.
Anyway, yeah, they look nice. Daryl?
We had the air quality meeting today going over what we're gonna cover in that grant application. Went over that with the committee, we'll have that submitted for 20. About another 10 days. So, we know that is going fine. We've worked on that cooling water that we discussed before to Red Rock. Two routes they're looking at, going down Penn Street, which is the street that's near the industrial park, and one along the railroad tracks. I assume they're probably gonna beat the Penn Street route because it doesn't have any wet layers. So as soon as we get a decision back, then we'll get their commitment then. Process out all the additional money to get that deal.
How long will that...
The deal?
How long will it take, you think? Just an estimate.
Probably forty-five days. We gotta get it out the bid and...
According to paper plan, I think it's January. I just wondered, would I go as planned?
I don't know. I don't know much about their schedule, but yeah, they did say they wanted it open in January. So I just haven't... Once we get a commitment, we'll put more work into it at this point.
Yeah, it's up to them to do the next.
Yeah. So we've done some analysis on the lagoon to make sure we can take the chemicals and whatnot they had to their cooling water, so we're looking at the DQ on that. We got some information to you on budget document, so that should be final now. We did get proposals from the county firm for the audit. We've got two proposals from two firms. Both firms are qualified. The additional part of the proposal was cost, one cost was probably more aligned to what we've been paying. The other cost was about half of that. So I guess we need some direction on how to go from here. You know, as much stuff as we have to go through and... I don't know what environmental rights is here, that maybe the other firm doesn't... But you might have that to work, that's going to be. Anyway, that's just one of my thoughts. So we need to get somebody on board here probably.
One of those firm, was it...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the ones at the school and county and...
Were they the low bid?
They were.
I think they know what they're getting into, I think they're pretty familiar with the area, so if they're... I mean, they probably... you need to just confirm that with them, but I think... I think they have a pretty good idea. I mean, they've reached out to us once before, so if they're the low bid, I don't think they're... and we all, like I said, we're going to change that up, obviously. You know, we've removed the single source audit, which won't be necessary this year. It won't be until we... if we do get a word of the USDA grant, that'll be more complicated and of course we'll tell them that. So they may just be doing it without the single source being part of there, whereas the other one may be assuming we have to do that this year, we do not, so...
That would be out of scope anyway.
Exactly.
That would have been out of scope for both of them.
Right. I... like I said, I... they seem to have been... the county seems to be very happy with them. They pretty much picked up everybody else in the area and they may... The low bid may just be because they picked up so many that they're just... You know, it's kinda like the idea, you bring in a contractor and it's way cheaper if they can do five other jobs at the same time, so because they're already here, that's... they may just already be factoring that in. So I wouldn't say... I don't know. I've looked at their materials for some of the other entities they've done and it seems like they're pretty complete in what they do. So I... I mean, we wanna do some due diligence to check on it, but I don't have any concerns, especially with them already having dealt with multiple other entities, school district, the county and everything else.
So what's your direction to us? Can we make a motion and vote on...
It's not on the agenda, so that's something next time. If you want us to follow up a little bit though, we can. And just ask them, but yeah, I think we would wanna do a resolution retaining them. And like I said, it's normally a little bit of a process.
So I think by consensus, we can direct you to make a resolution to accept that bid.
That request proposal, yes.
Yeah, the request proposal for the audit. Have it on next.
And, you know, talk to them about whatever questions or additions you want to make about...
I don't think it'd be good if we asked them.
Yeah, and I think Daryl can do that as far as just make sure you guys take... Because you're the ones dealing directly, kinda you're helping us. You're... I think you, Carmen and Tana should, and probably Jeff should just make sure. Just kinda let them know what the state of things, where we're at and make sure that they're good with that. If they are, then... Because like I said, you don't wanna get anybody... You get poor work when you blindside people, so get... make sure... But if they're on board with kinda what they're doing or don't need to revise it, then I think we can get it on the agenda, get it done.
All right. This is the... the bid for the...
Yeah, it should be an agenda item.
It's its own agenda item, Mr. Mayor.
So we'll get to it in a minute.
It's under your business.
Oh, okay. All right. Let's go to the public agenda. None? Old business, the concept lodging tax grant program guidelines?
Those A and B are kind of together, Mr. Mayor. The resolution is adopting that if the council's pleasure. As you guys have kinda talked about, you've kinda talked about a fifty-fifty split at your work session with one fifty percent of the available funds being designated in the small grant process and the other fifty percent at the council's pleasure, obviously within state guidelines. So that's what the ordinance... excuse me, that's what the resolution reflects. That split can be adopted, can be adjusted at any time as long as you haven't given out those funds. Obviously, these are always gonna be available funds because this stuff can vary. You know, we could have a great year like we had this year or we could all be on fire and not hardly have anything. So it's... you'd never wanna commit more than what's actually in the fund at the time stuff comes in. And I think that reflects the process.
So we've talked about this at multiple meetings. We've talked about last being and maybe the suggestion to go with a fifty percent up to and then if we exceed then that other fifty percent there is still to delegate however we wish, but I don't wanna get the false assurance of... Gonna spend all of it on everybody's grants, proposals that they're bringing. I'd like to have an idea of having some like long-term projects that we have somewhere for. And then if we can't think of any soon and it's building up, then certainly entertain more. And as we've come in and pulled it over, it makes sense to just keep an eye on this and we see that we're gonna spend more than we... Then we just do, because we've got good proposals. But having said all that, I mean, I don't think they need to really waste anymore. I make a motion to pass Resolution 961, Resolution adopting criteria for selecting applicants for the transient lodging tax grants and sub-single permits for using for grant funds.
I'll second.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Want you to make a second, vote in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
And then do we have to separately approve the grant program guidelines?
No, that was all... That's all we're saying. The resolution did two things. It specifically... this is what you... these are the minimum criteria to apply for the fifty percent and if you do apply... And by the way, if you guys give grants out of the less restricted funds, you guys can still say, "Guess what? We want you to still sign this contract, we want this, this and this." I assume you might, like I said, your own project is one thing or like I said, a bigger request, you wanna use the unrestricted funds. You guys can put conditions in with the resolution. "Okay, bigger request, we're doing this, we wanna see this, 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 this and this" and the whatever, so you guys have that flexibility.
Okay. Still under oath is LCT is requesting funds for lodging tax funds through assistance according to executive director position for the organization. There is nobody here. Mayor, I motion that we table this until...
Of course they have a special meeting with family eventually, yeah.
So in that table, I wish we could reach out to Ginger Castro and see if she have a special meeting, at least with two of us, not to form a full form then we could come back and kinda get this resolved.
So my suggestion is why don't you appoint that hawk with two folks specifically, go meet with them, maybe both. You know, the master plan and that, because these are both gonna be in that unrestricted funds category because they would not fall under the new guidelines that you just adopted. And then you guys can kinda come back and work. That would be my suggestion for the council's pleasure.
God, I'll go by... Anybody else wanna come with me or I can take one? Come by, she should be in tomorrow. Come by and we'll catch her off the wall.
Me and Darwin?
Is the fairground the master plan loading down here? So the same thing with that?
We'll follow them on Tuesday.
Are you making a motion to table this?
And I think, Mr. Mayor, you need to appoint both of them as a committee to kinda reach out and get more information for the council on both the master plan and the...
Okay, so as of this time, I'm appointing Darwin and Nikki to reach out and get more information on both of those items. The master plan and the LCT request for grant.
And then I think you guys finish off the tabling.
On C.
On C and D.
Yeah. Or some tables, C and D.
I'll second.
Come on, favor?
I'll...
Thank you. All right, I'll move over to remember the lodging aisle, rebuilding animals. She's not here. All right, next one, town council meeting change. We've been on the six o'clock one for three months and I don't see mostly the same people that come at four o'clock that come at six o'clock. And I would just soon move it back to four o'clock for a teaser on everybody. Especially some towns that have other things going. So do I have a motion?
So it was passed as a...
Can't remember.
Window kind of to look at. I don't think we need to do anything but go back, just take...
Go back to our river formal. Because it's in our council rules already and by law.
Correct. Yep. Yep, so yeah, from what I remember from the motion, it was as Darwin remembered a ninety-day trial. Time period has passed, so just let it expire by its own terms.
Next is bid for campus paving projects.
Received one bid. I calculated there asphalt cost was about a hundred and thirty-five dollars a ton and the generalcy price is a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty tonne of gasoline. So I recommend award, we can get the project done. We have three hundred and whatever that's talking about.
Three forty-seven?
How much do we have? We have three forty-seven.
That's what the bid is.
We have three seventy-two and change.
Now, just one that has the plant already here?
Yes, yes, we have.
That would be even better.
So seeing that this went out for bid and that we've got a bid proposal, I think motion to award the bid to Rockland Construction LLC.
And checking it, vote in favor?
Hi.
Next on the item, the cat mile or the cat mile mentor program?
She said she might be a couple minutes late, so... I didn't think anyone was gonna go this fast, so I...
Mayor, council, what the manager update? Council have anything?
That was good fair, I'm not sure if I should, but no major catastrophes, so that was good. I really appreciate all the work that the fairgrounds put in, the fair board, everybody involved. Their chief's department. I just wanted to make sure everybody, you know, understands that we really appreciate the work. It seemed to go really flawlessly.
So we are all hoping Kathy will show... She and I met earlier this... last week to talk about mentoring program, which I'm involved in, have been a mentor for many years. She has been appointed as interim director and doing a job to the faculty's job and she was there before and they currently have a want to hire a new mentor. So they're gonna do a kickoff program, mentoring program soon with the chamber. In connection with the chamber, they have also reached out to the county and county's given them some funding to support that program. She is gonna make a request for us to help fund the mentoring program that exists in the executive director position, a full-time position. Requires a lot of work, getting mentees and mentors connected together and all the activities that they put together throughout the year. The Western Stratus, the kind of assignment auction, the night thing to help support them has been a good thing for the community, attended that many years. So I don't think I'm more of her, but I do encourage people to reach out to her and the program and continue to help mentor the kids in our area, those especially are, you know, on the program that don't have this support system that the neighborhood do have. It's great for everyone, which requires one hour a week to spanner mentees. But other than that, you know, I would chip in on Thursday. I tend to go to that meeting, I usually do and see how, you know, progress is going through. You guys have anything? Um, I did... I did meet with...
Go ahead, go ahead.
With Representative Stanley and Mr. Ramsey on lunch meeting and told that Daryl, they were hard on her, trying to get their water projects. And they said just keep working with Business Oregon. I said, "I think he's already been doing that." So, but they said if there's anything they can do to help, let them know.
Okay, that's good.
Maybe take a break waiting on Kathy or...
I think Sandy had something.
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm not gonna be here from September seventeenth until October ninth. I will be on vacation.
Do we have to make a motion in second round or...
I didn't see a ticket.
I've also gone from September twenty-fifth until October seventh.
So which day is the next meeting?
Did you get your information?
I think, I haven't checked my calendar at least.
Don, who's next?
I want to show you.
The twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth, I'll go to the twenty-fourth. I'm not leaving until it's...
It's mainly to go over stuff that varies. I think it's kinda has to do with prescribed party and stuff. Will you register me for the... I was missing him, because there was nothing left. There was no classes left. They just extended the deadline. I knew I wanted, I said I wanted it. But a bunch of the classes were already gone when I did it last Friday. So I have to go back on and see what classes are available and if canceled. Because you have to pick what classes you wanna take.
So interesting, what about that? I've been in that a couple times and other ones somewhere for the county. They're not gonna take them. The rooms are all dark, that's why they may be full, but you know, some people cancel, don't show up. They usually would stick in, stand against the wall and... I was in one that was full last year and my born, I just sat in the back and...
Because you'll have to stay in the contact and they can't accommodate you. Just don't put me in. Because you guys will have... you'll have to come in tomorrow at some point in your classes because I can't take those.
Yeah, so we didn't have to take them last time, but I know this one.
No, you have to come in and take them.
It's part of the location, because last year was done.
I was on the roof last Friday and I was able to get up on the roof. Facing the hill on the side of the parking lot.
No, we emailed you about ending quite a while ago.
All right, Mayor, I see Kathy's house, you know.
I'm not with the little ones.
Those are mine. I've been laying all of them. Actually, Darwin's.
Nobody will even know.
Just drop them off, little girl.
Kathy's here, enjoy it, Kathy?
Oh, you want me all ready? Okay, we're excited. I had to get my nails done, I told you that. So I'm gonna give you just a brief proposal because I didn't have time. I just found out about this the other day, so I didn't really have time to do it. I'll give you my copy.
No, that's really fine.
Okay.
I can get it off.
Okay. Where do you want, just, can I just sit here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good. I'll just talk to you a little bit. So I am now the interim director of Lake County Youth Mentor Program. You might remember that I ran it for seven years before and then I thought I retired. And that was fun for a couple years. And now I'm back. And what we're vibing is that with the reorganization, which I didn't really put all of that in the letter. This is... the letter is basically telling you what the program does if you don't know about it. Who doesn't know about the program? Is there anyone who really doesn't have an idea of what we are? And what we do as a group? And by the way, I didn't...
You still figuring it out, you can call me tomorrow.
But anyway, the program is kind of in a little bit of a tight spot right at this moment because the director who left didn't apply for a lot of the grants. So we are a totally grant-funded program. So we are having to use, if you look at the budget that I gave you, we're having to use a lot of our contingency funds and we've been building on that for a while to make sure that if you don't get a grant, that you have something to fall back on, but you will not do grants. So I went to the county last week and begged, which Ray was there after I got it. So the county granted me five thousand dollars and they said, "Well, why don't you ask the city to match that?" So I'm here tonight asking the city if they would be willing to match five thousand, knowing that I would take anything you would give me if you have any funds. And I know it's kind of a late time to do that, but I think if you were to look at the mentor program and the results that we get, there's a lot of kids that are served. And as Brad said to Ray last week when we saw him, he says, "Most of those kids are in the city."
But it's a community issue.
It is a community. So the county has given me five thousand dollars. Lake County ESD is matching that five thousand since the county gave it and they said they would do a match for me. And so I'm asking the town of Lake... I said city and I'm sorry because we're a town. Forgive me, I've only been here a couple weeks, as far as the program. I would like to ask that if you would be willing to match those funds or match in some way or another to help us. It also helps with grants that we're writing and I am in the process. I have a grant that I'm gonna have submitted on Monday or resubmitted. And then I have another grant that I have to be submitting by the twenty-sixth of this month. And anytime you can show, one of the big questions is always, is the community behind you? And if I can show that there's any kind of commitment, anything that you can do, that always helps with grants, because they want to know if we're just begging them and not asking the community to support us. So that's kind of what I'm doing, is asking if you would be willing to do that. So if you have any questions, I'll be... I'd happily try to answer them. I've been with it two years. I am still a mentor, so I've not been out of the program. And just a pitch, if any of you want to be mentors, I have forms available in my office that I could bring to you.
I'm surprised you hadn't already brought them.
Well, I was. And when you look at me and say, "Well, I don't have time, I have kids," I want you to look to Darwin, who has nine children and is a mentor.
Where did I come from right before I got here? Coaching somebody. What am I going after this? Coaching football.
So he's coaching and he is a mentor and he has nine children. So that's really not an excuse to give me. Anyone in the audience, you can also be a mentor too. And they love anybody. Kids just... they just need someone to be their friend. And that's all you have to do is be a friend. You don't have to do fantastic things. You've got fringe rides or color, relook.
I did talk tomorrow.
Yeah?
Yeah, well, I'm never really giving a full answer, so I'll talk through again.
Well, something for you to put on your calendars. On September twenty-sixth, we're doing a mentor program kickoff at the chamber. And it's a time to come and just find... And it's a time to come and just find out a little bit more about us without any pressure, sort of. You know, you walk in a door, but there's pressure. But it's a chance to come in and see, we're, we're trying to recruit. We are way down on our number of mentors, so that's my job in the next couple of months to bring mentors in and get this program back on its feet again. We have a lot of other programs. We do do team mentoring, and that's been really successful. We are doing peer mentoring with the schools going down to the elementary school and having breakfast with kids. So there's a lot of things. We do a Go Girls Empowerment Program for girls who need to feel like they can take power. So anything other than that.
Okay. We'll have to get back with you, so we can, with your budget.
Absolutely.
See what we can find.
Yeah. That happens, I've been doing that, a lot of budgeting right now, so. But I appreciate any consideration you can give me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good program, thank you. And Scott, on a personal note, thank you for all that love, and I just started a new car.
Thank you, dear.
We made close to four thousand dollars.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have anything else?
I just wanna say that I have learned today that our, not little, that our newspaper reporter is leaving, and I wanna thank him for coming to our meetings and pretty accurately reporting everything he heard. Or sleeping.
Incorrect, I'm a southern state.
Good luck now there in Texas, back in your old stomping grounds.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
So of course, when you're reporting. Enjoy the humidity.
Nobody?
Yeah, thank you, Michael, we really appreciate it.
We're gonna miss you on our team next time.
I might come back just for South Hall season.
Alright, does anybody have anything else?
Put a reserve spot.
Are we going into executive session yet?
So we will adjourn the regular session at four thirty-two?